Let me call to orders. The July 9, 2025 meeting of Pottstown Borough Council's Committee of the Hall. Would you rise for a moment of silence, hollered by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I'm gonna start with a little presentation from our police. Chief Markovich? Please.
Chief, if you can hit the switch on that, if you want, on the top. Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I think everybody remembers approximately two years ago when Montgomery County District Attorney Kevin Steele was here presenting ShotSpotter to you, looking for your approval to commit it in Pottstown. What we did, and it's been an incredible asset, Mr. Steele is back, just not here tonight, but he wants to make some improvements to ShotSpotter. He's looking to implement a drone and incorporate it into the technology of ShotSpotter. So I have a brief three-minute video that I want to show you. As you watch the video, it's more of a technology video to show what drones can do. And then, once it's over, I'll explain to you a little bit more how we intend to use it with ShotSpotter.
911, what is your emergency?
I think I'm being robbed. Three guys at my store, and they haven't gone.
What is the address?
Jackson Mini-More, 6316 North 83rd Street.
Responder one en route. Arrival in 45 seconds.
Edward nine, three minutes out.
Edward eleven, ETA in six.
Caller states two white males standing outside, possibly armed, one white male inside the store.
Edward nine, copy.
Can we have our generational perspectives? We have our armed robbery in progress. Pull up the drone feed.
Yes, sir.
Three suspects are on foot, alleyway adjacent to the food mart.
Wait, is that just a lighter? Unit standby, it appears to be a lighter.
Responder one, affirmative. Object appears to be a lighter and not a weapon.
Edward nine, copy. Go on the live feed. We'll make contact and advise.
It's not hard to imagine how this situation could have gone differently. Brink is building a system to give first responders more information before they arrive at emergencies and lower response times. Specialized drones are prepositioned in robotic charging stations at strategic locations throughout a community. The system is integrated with 911, computer-aided dispatch, and other software to deploy the aircraft autonomous in seconds. These drones can deliver life-saving payloads faster than ever. With an onboard two-way audio system, responders can even communicate remotely to provide instructions.
All right, we have help headed your way. We have dispatched a drone that's equipped with an AED. Did you just keep giving me updates on your status?
They can also gather intel or de-escalate a situation. Drones can be deployed in the field to get a fast bird's-eye view of any situation and generate 3D models for documentation or court reviews. DFR allows first responders to see through smoke and identify hotspots, or locate suspects and devise a response that minimizes risk for everyone. The drones also mesh with each other for extended range across entire communities. Agencies around the country have already adopted DFR programs. On average, they clear a quarter of all 911 calls with drones alone. They get eyes on scene in less than 70 seconds and have achieved 50% faster response times agency-wide. Enter the future of public safety today with Brink DFR, because this is just the beginning.
So Mr. Steele would like to implement just one drone in the borough, and it would implement ShotSpotter. As you saw, the drone is about 12 inches by 12 inches. That mechanism that it came out of, they call its nest. That nest is like three foot by three foot and weighs approximately 300 pounds. If you approve it, the nest would be mounted on the roof of Borough Hall, and that's where it would be deployed from. When a ShotSpotter alert, when we receive a ShotSpotter alert, and that goes off on our mobile computers, in dispatch, on cellphones that have access to it for the police officers, and someone will be trained on the drone. When ShotSpotter goes off, they'll push a button, the drone will automatically deploy and begin recording, and it will automatically fly to the ShotSpotter alert area and begin recording the scene. It flies at approximately 200 feet, and it has a anti-collision mechanism in it, so it wouldn't run into trees or buildings. When we're done with it at the scene, that officer or whoever's monitoring the drone will push the button, and it will automatically come back to Borough Hall and dock in its nest. The nest is climate-controlled. In the summer, it will have air conditioning, and in the winter, it will have heat, so it will never freeze up and lock up. There will be some days, of course, because of wind, that we wouldn't be allowed to fly it. Mr. Steele has already started working and getting it approved through the FAA. Just because if you're gonna be controlling the drone, you have to have certain trainings and actually almost be a licensed pilot to drive the drone, fly the drone.
That's amazing.
You know how much I like cameras?
So this is a flying camera that goes exactly where it needs to go.
Very quickly.
How many more can we get?
Right. So I have a question. It is really a safety, huge, like, safety measure here for every police for...
They will provide live feeds to the police officers.
Yeah, for the police, for responders, for the victims. Amazing.
So, yeah, it seems good. I work in technology, so I'm always gonna go with privacy. So you say it'll only be used when the ShotSpotter goes off?
That's correct.
And who would make sure that that happens? Like, how does that determine that it's only being deployed for that?
That would go through policy, and technically, that drone and that equipment would be owned by the District Attorney's Office. I would imagine, at the beginning, probably only people from Montgomery County will be trained to operate it. I think as we go on, more Pottstown people will be trained to operate it, but we're not quite at that stage right now of who's gonna be trained and who's not gonna be trained. We're still kind of at the beginning stages. I think they're looking to implement it sometime in the fall. But I just spoke with the drone company today, and they said they're not ready to... Our equipment is not ready to be put on the roof yet.
And you may not know this answer, it might have to come from them, but what are the chances that it's hackable or it could be taken over by people that should not be?
I don't know.
Getting it, okay. Because that's a serious concern. I mean, we're seeing it in doctors' offices and hospitals, and it's just getting worse. So I wanna make sure, at least know, if it's possible to hack that and how likely it would be, and what security features it may have to prevent that.
Chief, are there any issues with its proximity to the airport, flying and any of that kind of stuff with flight plans, or since there's a drone and we have an airport?
Not that I've heard of, but when I talked to Mr. Steele, he assured me, and I absolutely, of course, have no reason not to believe in that it will be FAA, all the requirements will be met.
Okay, great.
Yes, I mean, I think, and I'm just looking into it further myself, too, but I think what that means is essentially that it will pop up on, like, the FAA radar as a blip, right, so that pilots know that there's a drone in the area. That's really the main thing, like, when we have drones, somebody requests me to fly a drone in the borough, they have to notify the FAA, the fixed-based operators, so that they can then put out a message to pilots, hey, drone in an area, this altitude, this location for this long. So I imagine that that report would get sent out as a part of what they're doing to certify through the FAA.
The drone, with ShotSpotter, we have certain geo-fencing around the borough. That drone would only fly within that certain area.
You said in the beginning it would be operated out of the county?
The borough.
The county or the borough?
By county employees, probably Montgomery County.
Oh, but here though?
I'm sorry.
Out of this facility or in the county?
No, from the roof of Borough Hall, if you approve it.
Yeah, that's what...
But the monitors and all the equipment, would that be here?
It'll be in two locations, here and probably an on-call Montgomery County detective that will have to monitor it, and when the ShotSpotter alert goes off, because they also get our ShotSpotter alerts.
Okay. So the county operator would be here, operating it?
No.
No.
It would be at a different location.
It'll be, okay. Is the endgame for us, for the borough to take over eventually? Is that the endgame?
I would imagine we probably would begin to, just because I think it would become, I wouldn't say burdensome, but it would become a little bit much for somebody to be every night trying to control the drone.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we wanna be mindful, that we wanna uphold our obligation for transparency with councilors and with the public as well. And so what the chief is asking for tonight is limited in scope. And if the scope would want to increase at any time, my suggestion would be that that would need to come back to council for approval. So like, if they wanted to use it for other, in other ways, like some of the things that were shown in the video, then they wouldn't just do that, they would come back to council to get approval.
That was gonna be one of my questions, because that mentioned other software. That's a red flag. I wanna know what that other software is, and I wanna make sure there's no, like, surveillance and it's only responding to the ShotSpotter. And if it catches something else that's not part of that, I'd like to know how that's handled.
Okay.
Right.
We can look into that. I can guarantee you it'll only be used for ShotSpotter, and like Justin said, if we were going to expand, we would come back to you to ask for permission to use that in the borough.
Okay, good.
Are any costs or liability to the borough?
No, all the costs will be covered by the District Attorney's Office. I began talking with Chuck with liability, but that will be handled by the District Attorney's Office. We'll also need agreements and other things that Chuck will have to get involved with.
Okay, if we list this for Monday night, what is it you need?
Approval for the District Attorney to implement this drone program in the borough of Pottstown, and I think the big project would be to mount that on the roof of Borough Hall.
Okay. So let's list that for approval for Monday evening.
And Dan, and good evening, everyone. I just wanted to weigh in on the issue of the agreement. Because the borough owns Borough Hall, it's going to be somewhat of a lease agreement, but as the chief said, the cost, the insurance, the obligations are going to rest with the DA's office. So we wanted to make sure you were okay with going ahead with this, and if you are, we will draft an appropriate agreement for the chiefs, and myself, and for Justin's review to carry out exactly what we're talking about, the limited purpose of housing the nest on Borough Hall and making sure that all the obligations that we were talking about rest with the DA's office and not the borough. So again, it's a limited-purpose drone for ShotSpotter integration.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief, and thank Kevin Steele.
Okay, under subcommittees, infrastructure, Counselor Lebedinsky.
I've seen your emails and things.
Anything to add? No. Transportation, Counselor Proskel, nothing. Ordnance review, Counselor Proskel, this month. Economic development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. So thank you to all the people that participated in the survey that has been circulating, and we extended to July 6th. It just closed on July 6th, opened on May 14th. This was not handled at all by PAID. It was handled by PA Downtown that gathered all of the results. The respondents responded to them, and then they have given us summaries. So I've tried to summarize the data that I think is of interest here to council. So there was, the benchmark is 3% for PA Downtown, and this survey exceeded that. It was almost 5% of the population of Pottstown that responded. So we were very happy with the response rate of 1,154 people. I do have to say that the respondents that were encouraged were also people that were visitors or business owners or residents. So they could have fallen into multiple categories or just one category, and they did have to identify how they were answering, who they were answering, or how they were answering in the survey that was part of the survey. 908 respondents were interested enough that they wanted to have further communication, and so they shared their email information. The survey is the official DCED-adopted version. It is not a version that PAID came up with. It was, had to be adopted by PA Main Street and will be used in the eventual designation for Pottstown. This was a requirement. This is the baseline that is set. The survey then gets repeated in year three and again in year five to see where the trends are going. Positive sentiments. So these are the captures. So 64% of those respondents believe the community has affordable businesses. Not surprising, the highest was quality architecture, 87%. 69% of those respondents believe the community has unique businesses. They think that 69% a good array of special events, 77% shop in the downtown at least few times a month, we'll delve into that a little bit further. And 80% of the respondents believe the community has safe places to cross the street. There were areas of improvement. What was very interesting to us is most of the responses were very positive. So the areas for improvement that the PA Downtown gave us as far as feedback were really hard to distill and pull out, because most people had positive responses. But there are some things that we can work on. The community could be better marketed, 28%, 23% think things could be more vibrant in the evenings. In other words, we kind of roll up our sidewalks at a certain hour. I don't know whether that's true, but maybe during the week. 19% of respondents believe the buildings could be better maintained, and 26% of respondents believe the community could have a better business mix. So next slide. So they also distilled it down by age groups, and we picked to show you this evening, but certainly we have other age groups on either end of the spectrum. So what we looked at was ages 18 to 24, and then the next slide you will see will be ages 65 to 74. It is very interesting that overall, I think you can see, let me just get to my notes here, that 16 or 18 to 24 are definitely more favorable. So you can see that because there's more green shading and blue shading in these graphs. So with the exception of the one on the top right-hand corner, which talks about how often they shop in downtown businesses, that is only, it's the categories, if you can see that, says a few times a week, a few times a month, every day, a few times a year. The bulk of the survey respondents in the 18 to 24 category said a few times a week and a few times a month. The rest of those are whether they strongly disagreed or strongly agreed and everything in between. So you can see that there's a significant amount of blue and green in this 18 to 24, and in fact, on the downtown has safe places to cross the street, and the downtown has good, safe sidewalks for pedestrians, it's split between strongly agree and agree. Next slide. So what's interesting is the 65 to 74, you see less green up there, with the exception of they shop a few times a year and a few times a month in the downtown, but there is less blue. However, that blue is pretty significant, and the downtown has safe places to cross the street. Where they really significantly differ is the downtown has the right mix of businesses, the community is vibrant during the day, and they do feel the downtown is safe somewhat, but less safe, it looks less safe than those 18 to 24-year-olds. So next slide, please. It's okay. So this is a sampling of the residents. Really, I wanted to show this because I thought this was very interesting when we looked at the data, residents versus non-residents, the visitors in town. Sometimes I think we're harder on ourselves as residents in the place that we live than our visitors are, and that was strongly showed here. So you can see that there is a large, again, there's blues, with the exception of that one green section, which is 32.1, they, a few times a week, they go to downtown businesses or shop in downtown businesses, and then a few times a month. So next slide for visitors. So you can see visitors, again, there's a large green in a few times a week, the downtown has safe places to cross the street. So overall, the percentages of blues and greens are higher with our visitor population than they are with our own residents. So the other thing, so we're finished with this. If anybody has, does anybody have any questions about this particular part of the presentation?
I think you mentioned this already, but you said you selected the ages?
So the ages were broken down, and I have the ages in a report just for this purpose, for this presentation tonight, council.
I got you. Because I was like, there's a whole chunk of them in there.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I'm like, what happened to my age group?
I got you.
I know, we know.
Age group. We just, we picked either end of the spectrum.
Got you.
That's all.
Which was good, I really like to look at data, because you can't really argue with numbers.
You can't.
Yeah.
But I guess, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm done.
What were you trying to show with that bottom of the age group and top of the age group? Is there, is there a consistent trend as you go up that people feel it's more safe and walkable and comfortable as they're younger and then less so as they get older?
Yes, so definitely correct.
I'm asking, is that the trend kind of equal ratios as it goes up through the age groups?
Right. And people were more positive at the end, the lower end of the age group than the higher end of the age group.
Of course, because we get older, we get set in our ways. We don't play that.
I felt safe everywhere in my twenties.
Yeah, so, yeah, so there's a difference.
We get set in our ways, and as we older.
So I thought it was interesting. The other thing, just a data point from Valley Forge, Valley Forge Tourism does some data central around our visitors from areas, and visitors for them is considered 50 miles and out, and the largest population that visits Pottstown is from New York.
Wow.
So now, that's not a huge amount. I mean, it's like 13.7% versus the other states or other regions, but New York City, there is a fair, that is the highest.
Nice.
So I just thought was interesting.
I'd like to know why, like, that's...
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I think, I think we are easy access to New York.
Yeah.
I think things like the car show and the rumble and all of those things, they, the powwow, it drives, right, people here to the borough of Pottstown.
Yeah.
So I just thought that was some interesting data, and it was hot off the press, so I thought you would be very interested in it.
That's fantastic.
And we love the fact that it's a benchmark, right? It's a way to start, and it is part of the process of becoming a Main Street-designated entity with PA Downtown, and we really want to then be able to see, obviously, the job is to improve those scores as we move on.
Can you share that with all, like, the businesses down there, or have you already done that?
We haven't done it, because it literally came yesterday.
Because, you know, sometimes I'm a big stickler on, like, metrics and stuff like that, for those people to know that. So I think that would be great, that I think that would show that, wow, this is what's happening good, there are things that are good that are going on, and I think that will create some degree of trust and momentum. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And also make them feel good.
Yes, and we're gonna do, there'll be a press release about it as well.
Okay. And can we post it everywhere? Just out of town, so everybody sees it?
Everywhere. Yeah, that's a good one.
So I wanna also, so, all right, that's all the great news, right? I do want to, no, no, there's still good news.
Okay.
So there's still good news going on, but I do want to head-on talk about three businesses, three very different businesses for three very different reasons. None of them closed or went out of business because it's Pottstown. And I wanna be very, very clear about that, right? So DJ Pallett's, financial issues, closed up shop, didn't go anywhere else, right? Good news is, place is rehabilitated, in good shape, will rent again to a business that will bring jobs. Manatoni still works. Little bit of a shock, again, financial reasons. Had a meeting Monday, looking for opportunity perhaps for that equipment to be used, maybe not in that building, but people are working on it, just want you to know that. Happy that 11 years ago, five or six people got together, put their money in, and said this is a good idea. We had them for 11 years. The name got out there. It started right here in Pottstown, it went to other locations. Unfortunately, the times have changed, business like that ebbs and flows, and again, not Pottstown, every location closed, and it was a financial decision. Lastly, Lady Liberty. Jo, for personal reasons, has moved on to Florida with her family.
Yeah, she pulls it out.
Yes, nothing to do. So I really wanna be clear about that. I know sometimes the rumor mill, hey, whatever happened to that? I wanna encourage all of you, if you have questions of me, hey, what happened? I think you all know how to get in touch with me. Please call me and have the conversation with me, because we want the reality to be out there, and so I think it's really important to have those conversations. Okay. FET. 50% of the tickets are gone. If you wait until August, I don't want anybody to be disappointed, so please make sure you get in there. Thank you to our sponsors, Diamond Credit Union, Key Bank, Monaster and Grader, Steel River Playhouse, Tompkins, Traffic Planning and Design, Wolf Baldwin and Associates, Irvine White Beaufort Funeral Home, ROG Orthodontics, Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board, Montgomery County Community College, and Schultz Technology Solutions, and there are still sponsorships available. So please think about that, and it is on September 12th. Get your tickets at Pottstown FET. Lastly, I would like to say that PAID is 60, I think I've said that a few times, maybe 10 times before this, when I've been presenting. So PAID's 60, we're having our anniversary, Pottstown Progress. So Paid sixty, we're having our anniversary, Pottstown Progress Luncheon on November thirteenth. Please save the date. And the first thing that we wanna talk about at that Pottstown Progress, there will be awards bestowed. Um, and the Connector Award, twenty-twenty-five Connector Award, is being given to Amy Francis and Amy Wolf.
Oh, my gosh, yes!
For their great work and for making that connection. Gina Spees, Once Upon a Time for a Small Business. Gina had started out on Moser Road and then made the jump to downtown, so we're thrilled to support her. And then for the Legacy Award, Dana Corporation, who has long been an employer within the borough of Pottstown. So we hope you will come and celebrate, please wa-watch for more coming, but I wanted to, we're just announcing those hot off the press as well. That is my report this evening.
And the land bank?
No quorum.
Okay.
So, next month.
So for November thirteenth, what time?
So, uh, we will be starting at eleven-thirty, it will be at Brookside. And, uh, tickets and sponsorships will be available soon.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Levin Good, Human Relations.
Good evening, councilors, council president and mayor. This past Friday was July the fourth, Independence Day. It commemorates the adoption of the Declaration of Independence by the Second Continental Congress in Philadelphia on July the fourth, seventeen-seventy-six. The founding fathers declare the thirteen colonies were no longer subject to British rule, establishing the United States of America. July is National Ice Cream Month, National Ice Cream Day is July the twentieth. We wanna say thank you to council for the recent reappointments and the new commissioners. And the commission's next meeting is Tuesday, uh, July the fifteenth at six PM in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. And from the library, Mr. Busoli.
Thank you, members of council, I'll be very brief. Uh, our summer reading challenge kicked off last month. And not only is it the most participants and sponsors on record, we actually have about twice as much participation as we had last year. We're the only library in the county that can say that. Uh, we have two upcoming events in the fall. Booktoberfest, which is our fundraiser, tickets are going on sale this month. It'll be forty dollars, although if anyone wants to give more, you're certainly more than welcome. Uh, we also have a Halloween event the next day on October seventeenth. Uh, our annual appeal kicks off in September, it's the primary source of revenue, aside from Pottstown's contribution for the library. And we are beginning an endowment capital campaign in conjunction with Pottstown Area Health and Wellness Foundation. That's all.
Thank you.
And from the Record Center, Councilor Kirkland, anything to add?
Yes, we have a ongoing summer camp, uh, from ten AM to two PM. With all swimming, field trips, games, and activities. CPR classes. Uh, the boot camp, which is fitness classes. And they have senior fitness classes also. Family food bag handout on Fridays from nine to twelve. If you need any form of information, call four eight four nine four five one zero two zero.
Okay. School District, Councilor Lindsay.
I have nothing, I'll report in August.
Okay. And from the mayor.
Before you move on, I'm sorry, I forgot a really important one, Dwight Citigroup, groundbreaking. I'm really, really sorry.
Fantastic.
How could I, how could I forget the groundbreaking, right?
Yeah, but I think we should be thanking you.
You wanna do it again?
For bringing them here, because that was fantastic.
It was beautiful, wasn't it?
Love their vision.
It was nice.
It's gonna be such an awesome renovation.
Oh, it's gonna be nice, yes.
So I just wanna say, from an infrastructure perspective, right? That's Paid's mission, I should've remembered this, it's our sixtieth. You strip away all the pretty language, we are here to increase the tax base, period, end of story. And those types of projects do just that, along with providing, um, more to support the rest of the tax base. So, really, really important, Dwight Citigroup, um, and infill projects, anything that we can do to have land that is vacant with quality development on it, that's what we need here. Thank you.
Got it.
Sorry.
Mel, Mayor Endon.
Good evening, sorry. How is everyone this evening? It's been a busy June. You all have me, running me ragged. All right, since last time, I wanna thank Denise Williams and the Juneteenth Committee, who put on a beautiful pageant and a youth business fair. Um, I had the privilege of being one of the judges, and I really love how she highlights and celebrates the, uh, youth excellence that we have in the borough. Juneteenth Festival, I really wish I had control over the weather, but man, even in the rain, we had such an awesome time, we had amazing live music and food and the kid pettings, petting zoo. Um, the ducks really loved the rain, um, and so did the kids. In addition, she had, uh, the Black Excellence Gala, which was at Ribbon, which is, again, beautiful, over-the-top, Academy Awards of all galas. Um, and this year they were, were able to award seven students with nine hundred dollar scholarships. All right, and then we had lots of fundraisers and basket raffles for Family Services Meals on Wheels, Rotary's Fourth of July Parade, and the Go Fourth Festival. I heard we got it, we brought in a lot of money, so that is good. The Rumble. After years of pleading, I was ecstatic to see a borough business as a vendor this year. So congratulations to three brothers for making it to the vendor list of the Rumble. So happy. As Peggy said, two seventy-four North Hanover Street is gonna be fantastic. We also had lots of meet and greets with the next changing of the guard. Our Pottstown Neighbors, Neighborhood Partnership Meeting with Genesis Housing. Um, we've received twenty-five applications for facade improvement grants, so those will be, um, starting soon. We had our Latino support meeting regarding ICE incidents. Listen, I just wanna tell everyone, we've been educating the communities on civil rights and steps to take if you're a family member or an observer. I've been working with the county. I, I would like to say, please do not spread rumors on social media. Everything needs to be fact-checked. It freaks people out unnecessarily. We have a secret communication chain to report info and to fact-check. So if you would like to be, and if you're an observer and you feel like you wanna help, just take notes and write down everything. If you feel like someone is, rights are being violated, take notes, physical description, dress, time, warrant, be a legal observer. And please do not, if you are there when this is happening, do not ask questions when the person is being detained. It puts everyone in danger. I know people wanna help, but please, it puts people in danger. So, report it to council, you can report it to me, there's a secret chain. We will do all the fact-checking and make sure that whatever happened is legal and whatever. It's pretty scary out there, so let's not freak anyone out with unnecessary rumors. Let's see, oh, I welcomed the Sojourners at Riverfront Park. Dinner was set by Bowser's Catering, which, if you haven't been, their food's amazing. I wanna thanks, um, SRG and Taken Outdoors. I joined the Sojourners for the, the leg from Pottstown to Montclair, which is seventeen point three miles. My second time doing it, and this time, um, I got to go into Lock Sixty in Montclair, which was closed the last time I did this. And it's so cool, because I believe it's the only working lock in the United States. Like, people have to actually, like, pull up these big metal things to let the water in and level it out, it's so cool. Yeah, um, so you could go see that, you don't have to go on the kayak, but you can go walk down if you like. And, oh, we had bald eagle sightings, which was very cool. And I heard an awesome stat. Since Taken Outdoors had their ribbon cutting, which was what, Peggy, two, two years ago? They have put thirteen thousand people on the river. That is amazing. So it just shows how many people are coming out to our parks, to our borough, taking advantage of what we sometimes take for granted is right in our backyard. So, um, I was very excited to hear that. All right, and then the Children's Discovery Center also had their grand opening. They've been open for a little bit, but I was very happy to see this fantastic partnership with Montgomery County Community College, I'm so glad they found a space. Beth has been talking about this for, I think, I met with her eight years ago. And she had this vision, and I am just thrilled that it has just come to a reality. And the kids love it, I mean, the only kids that are screaming are the ones whose parents are taking them home. They don't wanna go. So, feel free, if you wanna, like, go volunteer there, I'm sure they would love to have you. Uh, we also had, uh, Pottstown Play Streets, but it was canceled, and I didn't know because of the rain. But I'm glad, because I went and I got to see the, um, park at Bright Hope. Was finally, had finally been finished, because as you remember, we had the groundbreaking, and they started, and there was construction, and then delay. So I was thrilled, Montgomery County Housing Authority finished it, it looks fantastic.
Oh, I'll go check it out.
We had the Fourth of July. I wanna thank Rotary and the Amys, Go Fourth, all the volunteers. The parade and park were packed. And, sorry. I manned a table for the borough, so I got to see all the traffic in the park, it was insane. It was so insane. And I was happy to be there and meet people and talk about all the services we offer. And thank you, Peggy, for the I pick Pottstown pins, those went all gone. Oh, and I also wanna thank our fantastic employees at the Borough and Parks and Rec, who literally vacuumed the flooded park for the, to have the event in Memorial Park. I don't know if y'all saw the park the day before.
I didn't see.
But it did not look like we were gonna be having it there, and I, I just couldn't believe it. So, I love Pottstown, the community, everyone gets rallies and we get it done. Also, thanks for the, um, Police Department for being out there with us all day and keeping us safe, it was a long day. Um, and then today I spoke in support of the Pottstown Nurses United at the rally today, um, for more staffing and equal wages at Tower Health. All right, upcoming events, Pottstown Play Streets tomorrow at Chestnut Street Park, five thirty, seven thirty. Also on the twenty-fourth, at Washington Street Park. And the thirty-first, all of July, um, at Spruce Street Park. Saturday, July nineteenth, from ten to two, is a free pardon and expungement clinic. Legal Aid and the Montgomery County Public Defender's Office will be putting that on, it's sponsored by Senator Penny Quick and State Rep Sarisi. If you want to speak with a record-clearing attorney at the event, you have to register beforehand to make sure that there's a spot. But again, you, anyone can attend. I think, uh, the Sweat Chasers are doing a cleanup on the nineteenth as well. July twenty-sixth is, I think, National Carousel Day, which I am co-sponsoring with Jo Sarisi from twelve to two, so come out to the carousel. Also on the twenty-sixth is our Pottstown Pride at the Shankle, Shankle United Church of Christ. Oh, there's a ribbon, oh, I think maybe it's the same day, I'm sorry, I forgot to write the date. The LGBTQ Community Center ribbon cutting, um, at four fourteen East High Street. Guys and Dolls is showing from August, no, sorry, July twenty-fifth to August third, get your tickets now. And our car show is August second, and National Night Out, if it is approved, uh, for August fifth, from five to eight. And just a couple announcements, Sunset Hill Brewing is open at the terminal. If you haven't been, please go try their beer, it's fantastic. I have seen their hop farms, and I have watched them grow these hops for the past four years. They're fantastic, and they're so nice. Artillery Brewing also open, we said hi to Riley, I'm glad they were able to, uh, get up and running. And parking is not free on Sundays. Please stop calling me and asking me to take care of parking tickets for Sundays.
Oh, you don't do that?
Well. Guys, it's revenue, we need it for our town. Like, remember when, like, there was all this parking and no one was here, and now when you go downtown, there's very little parking. So please, 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 um, if you get a ticket, just pay it. And fireworks, clearly, nobody listened to me. There are, there is these, like, bazooka firework things that people are sitting on their stoops and, like, shooting over across, like, Beach Street. From their, from their stoops across into houses. The only reason I didn't stop when someone shot my car on Fourth of July was because I was so tired, I just wanted to go home. So, please, please do not shoot off fireworks, especially not in little residential neighborhoods. It sets things on fire, uh, hurts people, and we have enough to deal with than to respond to idiots doing this, all right? So, our fireworks were professional fires, were fantastic though, so. All right, see, I told you it was busy. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay. And from the borough?
All right.
Manager Keller.
Good evening, everyone, a couple important updates for you tonight. So, again, I just wanna echo the mayor's comments and, uh, thank, um, all those involved in getting the borough ready for the events this past Fourth of July weekend. It was really an all-hands-on-deck, uh, type of effort, we had multiple departments there cleaning up Memorial Park, in addition to Parks and Rec, we also had Public Works. We even had the, the fire department on standby, just in case we needed some extra water pressure. But, um, we were actually able to use, um, two of the authority sewer jet trucks. So these are trucks that are used to clean out the sewer lines, to actually clear some of the mud off the paved surfaces and, and the, and the trails. And I think one of those jet trucks, the authority just purchased, brand new. So glad to be able to have that equipment, um, and use it in a creative way. And just really wanna thank the staff again, because really, without their efforts, the events would have been much less ideal for the attendees. We did take some preparations before the storm, so, uh, we did some sandbagging around the carousel, around the spray park. Never made it up to the carousel, but, uh, the spray park, um, would have been impacted, but the sandbagging really did help in that regard. So thanks to Parks and Rec for doing that. June was a busy month, it also caused a lot of wear and tear in, into Memorial Park. Nothing really more than to be expected, um, but then with the flood, that just added some additional, uh, wear and tear. That was kinda above and beyond what we normally have. So, as a result, we've got Memorial, um, Baseball Field Number Two, possibly out of the, out of commission for the rest of the season. But it looks like Memorial Number One will be open for July twenty-sixth, so we're hoping to get out there, roll, aerate, reseed everything, um, while we're giving these fields a break, and get everything back into shape for, uh, the fall. The good news is, is that we don't really have any events until, um, later on, uh, in August, so. And then in the same vein, I just wanna inform everyone that, um, if you recall, the, the authority had requested a voluntary water conservation measure, so with all the rain that we've had over the past several weeks and months, the river and, and the ground moisture are now mostly normal. So, that being, uh, or that, uh, request has been lifted, uh, for voluntary water conservation. And then I do wanna have a little, uh, teaser for everyone, a little, uh, surprise, so. Thanks to, uh, spearheading this by Councilor Lindsay and for the support of the rest of Borough Council. We now have the signs for Chief James E. Rogers Way, uh, produced. So these will be, uh, put up on, uh, Grant Street, at the intersections up there. And we are looking to hold a, um, dedication ceremony on August twenty-eighth at five PM. All are welcome to attend, so, I think, uh, at the locate So I think, uh, at the locate, two locations, the signs are up already, um, but just wanted to give you a kind of a sneak peek of, uh, what they'll look like.
It looks bigger in person than in the picture.
Yeah, it does.
The picture that Alexa sent me.
State standards and still be readable, um, from an ADA standpoint, so that's why it's so large. Um, and then again, uh, we were at Dwight City Ribbon Cutting, really excited for that project. And, and as I said at the event, um, it's not often that we get to break ground on a project that checks so many boxes. Um, new housing to help alleviate the housing shortages, economic growth, neighborhood revitalization through an adaptive reuse of a historic building, um, and then smart and transit accessible development, all while increasing the borough's, uh, tax base. This, this was really a slam dunk project for us and, um, really just wanted to commend Pave for their work to court them and attract them and now be their partner, um, as they helped them through the development process and getting open. Another, uh, update on improvement that we made to our online payment process. So, um, we now have on our, our Borough's webpage, uh, payments button. You can pay for your rental payments and your property transfer payments. So, um, check it out. It's going to be a lot quicker, a lot easier for people to do it this way. Um, and, uh, this will be through the licensing inspection payments, uh, on the website. Uh, when you click the button, you'll land, you'll get an option for LNI, or you'll get an option for, um, utility and taxes and AR. Um, so you'll go to the LNI for your rental and your, um, transfer payments. And in the future, we'll be rolling out, um, other, uh, payment methods online for LNI as well, such as permits and things like that. And then, um, just wanted to update a little bit on, uh, a couple of bridge projects. So the East High Street Bridge in Lower Potts Grove, we had a meeting at the end of, end of June, if you recall. There was some, uh, emergency construction work that was done to stabilize, uh, that bridge on High Street that goes over the Sproglis Run. And, um, at this point, it's, it's in the early design phases, phases of the project, and it's about a three-year design phase to get through all the PennDOT approvals and, and everything. But once that's done, a new bridge will be, uh, constructed right there in front of, uh, Sunny Brook on High Street. And they're looking at a closure of six to 12 months. So that's going to cause some major inconvenience, and we're still working with PennDOT right now on the, uh, detour routes for that, um, bridge. But again, still three years out, so we've got some time to plan for that. Um, we are finalizing the plans for the Moser Road Bridge, um, surface and joint replacement project. Um, that will hopefully be ready to go out to bid in the fall here, and then we're hoping to go to construction in the spring. Um, we are hearing, and it's not a hundred percent certain at this time, but that the industrial highway detour could possibly, um, be lifted late fall this year. So we're trying to wait for industrial to open so that we can close Moser. Because as you know, Moser is a primary detour route for industrial. So, um, we don't want to have both closed at the same time, and we, and we can be flexible with Moser so that we can wait for industrial to open back up to start that. So I just wanted to let you know that that's in the works. Another bridge project in the works. We had a kickoff meeting for the Washington Street Bridge replacement. This project was on the tip. This is going to be along the same timeline as the Lower Potts Grove Bridge on High Street. It'll be a three-year, um, engineering project through PennDOT. It's fully funded through, um, state and federal funds, so there's no cost, uh, to the Borough. And the next step will be to develop a RFP for a design consultant, which we will be seeking council approval for, for in, um, the upcoming months, hopefully in, uh, August or, uh, September. So, um, that really concludes my report. We've been busy and we've got a lot of great things coming up.
Very good. So, uh, we got the street overlay bids, they're in?
Yes, um, they are in at this point, and it looks like we have, um, a number of bids, seven bidders total. All the bids came in very close to each other, so it was a very competitive, um, app, uh, round. And right now, it looks like H and K, H and K Group is the apparent, um, low bidder. So we'll have our final recommendation for you on Monday night on those. And then, um, if that goes through, we'll be looking to do our 2025 roadway paving in, in the fall.
Okay. Uh, land development waiver requests. Uh, you Chuck?
Uh, yes, thank you Dan, and good evening everyone. Um, I believe council last month heard a presentation from Mr. Omquist, who I see is present this evening. Uh, give you a little preview of what would be coming to you for this meeting. Uh, he is requesting a land development waiver request for a parcel on Chestnut Street, which is presently vacant. I believe, uh, Richard Ryan proposes a four-unit condominium building with, uh, appropriate parking. For council's recollection, the significance of a land development waiver is the fact that this plan would, if granted, would bypass the local planning commission review and the Montgomery County Planning Commission review. Uh, Mr. Omquist, uh, I presume you want to have a few moments to, uh, refresh council's recollection on what you're proposing?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Solicitor Garner. Um, good evening. My name again is Richard Omquist, uh, with Picardi Phillips and Nataviano here in Pottstown. I represent the, uh, owner of the property, uh, 944 Chestnut Street LLC. As I mentioned last month, the proposal is to, uh, construct a four-unit condominium on this lot. Uh, we, in January, I believe it was, we went to the planning commission, uh, considering the size of the lot and the size of the unit, uh, we thought that it would be an appropriate, uh, project to seek a waiver of land development review. We, I, I don't like to bypass the planning commission, so out of respect, I went to the planning commission and asked them whether or not they had any concerns. And, uh, one of the concerns that we, we heard, uh, was from Mr. Hilton. Uh, he'll still be able to have his site, uh, uh, the, the design review, so they'll, they'll still be able to look at that. Um, and, um, uh, the waiver of the land development doesn't mean that we just come in with a building permit application and build a building. Your engineer still has to do a complete land development review, verifying stormwater, parking, and all the requirements, compliance with zoning, compliance with the subdivision and land development, uh, process. If you approve the waiver of land development review, we will have to submit the full, uh, fully designed land development plans that comply with the subdivision and land development ordinance, uh, and all the requirements. Uh, we, it, when we received the review letter from Cedar, uh, Cedarville, the, um, checklist was attached. Well, we have the checklist and we are going to comply with all of the things that are required for, uh, a submission for land development review. So your engineer still reviews everything. If there are any waivers from the subdivision and land development ordinance, which, uh, there may be a couple, uh, related to using aerial photos to identify surrounding structures and things like that, which are common waiver requests, we would still have to come before you for those waiver requests. So you still have the ability to ask the questions and review and determine whether or not any waivers from subdivision and land development ordinance that we're seeking, uh, would be granted. Um, and if they are not, we would have to comply, uh, with those sections of the subdivision ordinance. One of the things I wanted to note was that in Cedarville's, uh, uh, letter to you dated June 20th, uh, they were not recommending granting the, the waiver of land development. They stated that doesn't provide the necessary preliminary land development, uh, information. Uh, I, I believe that there may be a little bit of a misinterpretation as to the application. The application requires the submission of the application packet, a plan, a copy of the deed, and then the electronic copies as well. They specifically note the important note that is on page three of the application, which says that approval of a land development allows you slash your client to move forward without submitting the project to the planning commission for review and comment. However, the requirements for the plan that gets submitted would have to comply with SALDO. That is the case. We will comply with SALDO. But for the purposes of the waiver of land development application, if you don't approve the land development, we're going to have to come in for a full land development plan, right? So we need to know whether or not it's going to be waived before we proceed with finalizing the land development plans. When we submit the plan, we submit the information necessary to determine whether or not this is something that wouldn't require, or wouldn't qualify for waiver of land development. If we were doing subdivision of, of a lot, a larger lot to create new lots, if we were going through a larger land development project, building multiple houses, or, uh, an apartment or a large condominium multifamily, that it wouldn't be appropriate. We do believe that it is appropriate in this case. Um, and again, your engineers and your professionals will have the benefit of a full review, regardless of whether we have to go to the planning commission or not for a couple of meetings with the PC. So with that being said, I'm available for any questions that you may have. Uh, if, uh, your Solicitor Garner has any questions, uh, I'm happy to entertain those.
Anyone?
I don't think I have any questions at the moment, but I'm going to. I just need to think about it for a minute. I did read the part on page three, and that did concern me a little bit. Um, and anytime I hear that people want land waivers and they don't go through a full process, that always gets me concerned. Um, so I may have questions between now and Monday that I might need to ask.
Okay. Just, Dan, I just have a, a comment.
Sure.
So we'll list, we'll list on the agenda for Monday, a motion that council would grant or deny the request for the land development waiver. And council can vote on that at Monday's meeting. Uh, just for some perspective, uh, this has been reviewed by Cedarville, and as, as Mr. Omquist points out, Cedarville is not recommending an LD waiver. Um, the zoning officer has looked at this. A zoning officer is not recommending an LD waiver. Um, this is a, a vacant piece of property. It would be a brand-new building. It would require eight parking spaces. Uh, and from my perspective, historically, council has not, uh, waived a land development for a project of this size. And I, I understand what Rich is saying about, uh, it is a minor land development, but, but nonetheless, it, it does have components that at least staff believes should be reviewed by the planning commission and make recommendations to council with respect to building appearance, parking areas, landscaping, and the things that you would normally do. If this were a four-lot subdivision, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It's still a rather large building. It's a two-story building with four units. So in staff's opinion at least, uh, a land development, uh, should be, uh, required. But, uh, as a council's decision to waive that if you choose it, and I don't, I don't disagree with anything Mr. Omquist said, the Borough Engineer would still review this, uh, regardless, uh, but it wouldn't have the, uh, formal input of both planning commissions. So that's, uh, I don't, I don't have any questions for you. You've been very upfront about the process the whole time. So, uh, it's in council's lap for Monday night.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, land development. Uh, fire truck, that you Chuck?
Chuck.
Mr. Garner, tell us about our fire truck agreement with West Potts Grove.
Certainly. Um, as you know, a few years back, we entered into a fire service agreement with West Potts Grove Township to provide them fire service protection. Uh, the township received assets from the West, uh, Potts Grove Fire Company when it was dissolved, and those assets included the two fire trucks. Uh, through a Montgomery County Common Pleas Court order, uh, the township obtained possession of those trucks with the stipulation that the trucks be used for fire protection services for the township. Uh, West Potts Grove came to us and, and said, would you be willing to accept two trucks at no cost? We would transfer title, you would own the trucks, you'd maintain the trucks, and you would have control of the trucks under the authority of the Pottstown Fire Department. Uh, there's an agreement that has been approved by West Potts Grove that's attached to your agenda. It basically would turn the trucks over to the Borough at no cost, and we would use them for fire service protection, both for West Potts Grove and the Borough. The fire chief is supportive of this agreement, and he thinks that the trucks could be helpful to the Borough and the Borough's Fire Department. So if, if council is inclined to agree, uh, the agreement will be ready for your approval on Monday night.
Very good. Any questions? Nope, we'll list that. And, uh, okay, while I have you, Mr. Garner, the public transportation capital?
Actually, I'm going to take that one.
You're doing it. Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so this is for our, um, capital application to PennDOT, um, and the age of some of our paratransit, uh, vehicles, uh, due to their age, they need to be replaced at this point in time, and they will qualify for PennDOT funding because of their age. So, um, we would apply for a capital, uh, funding for replacement of these paratransit vehicles, and the Borough's match would be $1,403.
Okay. Very good. No questions? We'll list that for Monday. And an appointment of a Borough representative for Business Improvement District Board. Mr. Garner?
Uh, yes, council will recall last month, you passed the ordinance to create the Business Improvement District. Um, the bylaws of the BIDMA Management Association provide for seven members as the Board of Directors to run the, uh, Business Improvement District. Uh, according to the bylaws that are still in draft, one, uh, seat at the table would be for a Borough representative, a permanent Borough representative, I guess. And, uh, I think all parties agreed that it'd be appropriate for Borough Council to appoint its representative to the BIDMA Board. So, uh, although we're not quite there with the final draft bylaws and the management agreement is still a little bit up in the air until the bylaws are completed, we think it makes sense for council to take action and appoint the Borough representative to the board at this meeting with the idea that the bylaws and the agreement will be, uh, ready for adoption at the August meeting.
Okay. Uh, I have had conversations with Counselor Manostra, and he seemed to be the most concerned about the, the formation and the operation of, uh, BID.
I agree.
So, uh, I'd like to ask that we list it for Monday and approve him. Okay?
I'll gladly accept the salary for that position.
Mm-hmm.
We'll, we'll double that, just for you.
Right. And it's nice to know you are more outspoken than myself.
He is. Okay. List that for Monday. Uh, 15, we have a street closure for National Night Out.
Yes, so National Night Out is back, uh, will be Washington Street between Chestnut and Walnut, the usual location.
Okay. List that one. Uh, upcoming board vacancies. There is a, uh, one four-year term to expire June 11, 2025 for the Land Bank Board, one to expire for April 9th, 2027. For the Civil Service Commission, one six-year term to expire July 22nd, 2025. Harb, one five-year term to expire April 1, 2027. Construction Code, Board of Appeals, one three-year term to expire August 8th, 2025. Environmental Advisory Council, one three-year term to expire August 10th, 2027, and two three-year terms to expire August 10th, 2025. Uh, so, anyone, uh, would like to come forward and volunteer for any of those? We'd like to hear from you. And now, we'd like to hear from our citizens that are here at the meeting.
All right, so, um, first up, we have David Mass, please.
My question is, is all bicycle activity. Anybody that drives through this town on my way in here tonight, this is what I experienced just coming down Franklin Street to King. Passing me on the wrong side. I'm allowed to do 25 in Espera. I got electric bicycles going by me, on the wrong side, passing me on the right, making left turn in front of you, running every stop sign, every red light. I'd like to know what's being done to address this situation. And the other question I have is, I noticed just in my neighborhood alone, if you could walk into Tractor Supply Company, right? walk into Tractor Supply Company, right at the front door, when you go to walk through there, is a motorized, fat, tired, supposed to be for the farm. There's two of them in my neighborhood already. I noticed that tonight coming. So.
We'll get back to you.
The other thing I have, one more, and then I'm out of here. Noise level. I have certain neighbors, this has been going on for a couple of years now. Police come, five to 10 minutes after they leave, that levels up or even higher. It seems to me this thing needs to be rewritten, relooked at, readjusted, re-something. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Philip Thies.
Welcome back. Welcome back.
Well, it's all right.
Been a while.
Yeah, I'm on vacation this summer. So I'm working at home.
It's been a while.
It's been a while, man.
I had to take a little time out to come visit you folks.
Goodness.
Yeah, we miss you.
Now, now, look, we've got lots of problems in this town, and we need to start thinking out of the box. Not that you haven't already, but we need to think more out of the box. Now, we have a problem with some, some of the kids. As every community does, and they think that they have a right to vandalize people's properties, like in Fry Alley here, and elsewhere in this town, and trash everything up. Now, is there anything on the books in Harrisburg that when we get the little darlings before the district judge, that they can, we can demand that they be given a broom and told to sweep up so many blocks? And if their parents are the ones that are going to supervise them, and if their parents don't supervise them, well, maybe it's a hundred-dollar fine and maybe a night overnight with your kid in borough lockup so that they can sit there and just have no computer and no telephone and no nothing for a whole night, maybe a peanut butter sandwich. You don't get my drift? Maybe we get their attention, you know? I think the parents would, would get, would get the parents' attention, you know? That's for sure. Now, there's absolutely this noise offenders, you know? I'd like to add one more to that. Marijuana smell. Now, I have to be told about that by my neighbors because I have no sense of smell. And we had somebody lived over across the street in apartment, and they had a marijuana permit, which is a joke. And I had to keep my front windows closed for two years till they moved out now. Now, I think that needs to be readdressed to Harrisburg or somebody, you know? This is a problem for people in the community. People live in apartments. I can't imagine you have to inhale that garbage if you live in an apartment, you know? Even if they claim they have a marijuana medical card. I thought this was supposed to be for cancer patients. Now, there's one other thing I wanted, I want to go over. Several, several years ago, before COVID, how's that? Before, before President Biden's term, maybe, thinking back, maybe longer than nine years because somebody was here when I mentioned it, and they passed on. So I'll say over nine years ago, I asked that we could have a siren put in this town for civil defense to warn the residents. Now, we have a very unfortunate incident down in Texas, and that made me think of that again. And I'm drawing that to your attention. I know money doesn't grow on trees, but something that people really, we ought to think about. And we could put it on top of City Hall, or we could put it up on Henkel Hall. That's translated Chicken Hill. We know where that's at.
Yeah, we know where this is.
You know, also Washington Hill now. Which half is Washington Hill and which half's Chicken Hill? I know because our family lived at the corner of Washington Hill Road and Warren Street one time, so I know. Now, there's one other thing I want to recommend for your benefit and the whole town. So I see where we're talking about repairing streets, which, you know, it says overlay of streets. Is that what that means? You know, overlay paving? Do you think it would be a good idea if we checked with PICO before they start ripping up some more streets with gas? You know, they're good at that, you know, in this town. And they're, they're thinking about my, my neighborhood. I'm not hooking to them. And let's see, was there something else I wanted to bring up to your attention? Yeah.
You're almost at your time.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. Well, anyway, I think I've covered the territory. I wrote everything down. And if I got more to say, Lord willing, I'll be back Monday night and say more. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. We got one public comment right there. He didn't write, he didn't sign this.
Can you sign in, please?
Sign this thing. No, no pressure at all. Isn't that intimidating?
Is this his first time speaking? Does he know we don't respond because it's really uncomfortable when you stand up there and speak, and we don't, because we don't explain that?
Yeah, come on. Yeah, that's okay. That's all right.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. My name is James Rogers, Jr. I'm here representing my family. And the reason I'm here is to wish the council all the thanks and praises for your efforts for my father. I'm a resident of Chicken Hill, so I know Chicken Hill. Special thanks to Ms. Councilwoman Lindsay for all of your efforts. You know, we've been in communication. She stuck with me at a hard time, and out of nowhere, she says, well, you know, well, I'm asking her, well, when they gonna put the signs up? The sign's already up. I've written, passed it in the last couple of days, never noticed.
I didn't know that was up either. They told me.
Yeah, so thank you guys so much for my family.
Yes.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, and from our counselors, Counselor Proskel.
Well, this afternoon, we had a meeting discussing the bail form letter response from Judge Cardellusia. I was hoping it would say, no, all right, and these, you know, case summaries that you give me are terrible, we'll get it out right away. It wasn't quite like that, but I do appreciate the response from her. And what we're going to do is wait for another six months, kind of keep track of, you know, where violent crimes go. Fortunately, you know, we really haven't had any issues for, for quite a while, I like to keep it that way. And then, I guess, I'd like, of course, like to thank the Amys and Rotary, and, you know, Parks and Rec for cleaning up the, you know, the park. The boys had a great time at the, at the forest, you know, a lot of running around. And they're like the bubble guy, Granton Bubbles, I think. The walk home was a little different. Yeah, Stephanie, it's, I don't know what people use for brains sometimes. It's just, really, and I'm not sure if we had every guy in the forest out there too, we'd be able to put a dent in it, but.
I couldn't believe it. It was like, no, like, I don't know, every house.
I'm surprised, you know? Crazy.
Glad we didn't have any more issues.
But still, it didn't negate the, the good time for the forest. I really appreciate it.
Very good. Counselor Bennett.
Yes, I just have a couple of things. One, I do, I'm glad you brought up parking because I don't necessarily think, unless I can get some good data on the amount of revenue that parking brings in, that we should have free parking on Sundays. That's my opinion. I'd like to revisit parking, and again, I mean, I can write an email officially. I would like to know how much revenue we actually bring in from parking, and does it warrant the tickets that we're handing out and how much we annoy people with that on a Sunday afternoon that are coming into our town? If we had nowhere to park, maybe that's one thing, but there's got to be some kind of middle ground. I don't think parking should be free all the time, but it should be a conversation that we have. The other thing, I don't know what this would even look like, but is there any way we can put up some type of notice that the walk signs aren't working? I walk. I walk with families. I understand we're waiting on parts, but you stand there and somebody's going to get hurt because there's no way to know when to cross, and people are just crossing. I don't know what we can do, but maybe there's some type of, of notice or sign that we can put up until they're fixed. One other thing, I did, Andrew and I went and visited the Days Inn. I will just speak for myself. I did not, I spent about three hours there. I walked around wherever I chose to. Nobody stopped me. People were gracious. I talked to residents. There were several there that I knew from meeting them out in the woods. I did not see anything that gave me the feeling that anything that was reported to me was going on. Now, that said, I am a distrusting person. So there has been several times I've popped in unannounced, and I will continue to do that. That said, the first time I went there, after, I went over, because they need, they do accept pets, and some of the pets, they're cats and dogs, they run low on food. So they really needed some pet supplies, and I want, and I don't usually thank large chain stores, but I went into Petco, and I explained to them the situation. I told them who I was, and I asked if there was any way that they would ever give donations or what I could do. They were so excited when I explained to them what was going on and that this place took animals, that they came out with a giant cart of supplies for me. We really need cat stuff, so they don't get a lot of that. I have gone back twice to get more, and they told me, come back again. We will give you what we have every time. So I just want to give a huge shout out to them. They accepted me saying who I was and where it was going, and without many questions, they just gave me merchandise to help these pets. So I really want to thank them for doing that. Oh, and Dwight Citigroup. I am really grateful that they're here and that they do quality work, and they are conscientious and would rather take their time than to do things rushed. And that is something I truly appreciate, and we need more developers like them. That's all I have.
Okay. Vice President Liberdinsky. Nothing. Counselor Lindsey.
I also want to send kudos to Dwight Citigroup. We went to their groundbreaking ceremony, and it was very professional and nice, and everyone spoke, excuse me, at the, at the groundbreaking ceremony. And we went on this elevator with, and I said, this remind me of a movie. What was the movie, Stephanie? What was the movie name? Saw. It was like Saw. I said, I don't feel safe in this elevator. But anyway, it was, it was, it was a nice tour. They took us up to the top, and it's just so much potential there for that, and it was, it was awesome. It was, it was really nice. It was a really nice event. It was hot, though. It was hot. They didn't have AC because it was, of course, it was just hot. I want to say kudos to Go Fourth Festival. They did a wonderful job. And Rotary for the parade. The parade was long this year. I felt like it was longer this year, but maybe it was just me. It was, it was phenomenal. Every, everything worked out well. When we got, when, when the volunteers got to Memorial Park, we had to make some arrangements, and the Amys, kudos to the Amys. They did a wonderful job in placing us where we needed to be, and everybody had a good time, and the fireworks was, I haven't seen the fireworks in years because after that, I leave because I have to go to work so the next day, so I need to get sleep. But July 4, this July 4, I was able to see the fireworks, and it was amazing. I want to say thank you to Gus. Yes, and, and to John Amato. My, so it was, it was really nice. It was a really awesome parade and fireworks and the festivities and everything. I think that's all for me.
Counselor Minostra.
Yeah, I do. I would like to apologize for some comments I made about a tragedy that occurred a few months ago. Son of a longstanding Pottstown family, they were here in the 18th century, his life tragically ended. At that time, I said that the work that occurred around that tragedy was spectacular. Spectacular is not a word that I, that should be used by me to describe the events where the Eckers lost a son. AJ was a nice kid. He was in my house on several occasions on a professional level. He was an excellent plumber, HVAC technician, being well-trained by his dad. He will be missed, especially by his loving family and young daughter. There's nothing spectacular about that. I apologize to Mr. and Mrs. Ecker. As any parent who lost a child would, I, the Eckers might have questions about this loss. I would hope that we can bring them closure to this tragedy, which is much more appropriate than spectacular. I am sorry.
Counselor Kirkland.
Mayor Henry. To add to Andrew's comments, this spring, our community had a very sad tragedy that ended in a way that many people have questioned. Why did it have to happen? Why did a son, a father, and a so-loved young man have to die? The Ecker and the Herring families are grieving beyond imagination. They need more answers to achieve closure. We all ask why. AJ Ecker was a friend of mine, my plumber, and a great young man. And we will all miss him. We need closure. Meeting adjourned.